I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, August 11th, 2021, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Let's see, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried. We will begin with board reports. Judy, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hi, so I would like to take my time today to honor the contributions that SMCPS has made in my life and my education. So for those who didn't know, this past summer, I've been interning with Congressman Steny Hoyer, and I would like to say that, I like to think that without the extracurriculars that SMCPS offers, I wouldn't have been as competitive as a candidate or would have landed my internship. So I think it's really important to honor and to remember like how good our education system is. Also, I also like to honor my friends or other people in the school system who do CTE programs. There are so many internships available through the tech center and competitive career fields such as welding or IT, and it's really cool to see how many opportunities we really have. Additionally, as an academy student, I attend the Academy of Global International Studies. We partake in a capstone program, our project. It's essentially a two-year project where you create a research portfolio. So this past year, I had the pleasure of taking AP Research, and this summer I got my research published. So again, it is so cool to see how far your achievements can go in the school system. Thank you.
I don't have anything to report, but I want to welcome Judy. This is her first board meeting, being here with us, and thank you so much for being here.
Okay, let's see. Well, I'm back. Let's see, I missed one meeting for my son's baseball games in Kentucky, and then my father had surgery, so I was absent. So thank you to Mrs. Allen and everyone for holding down the fort, but family duty called a little bit this summer. First of all, I'd like to wish all of our fall student athletes good luck today. It was the opening day of fall sports tryouts. In the meantime, I'm also serving on the May Board of Directors, and I was recently appointed to PZAM, which is the Superintendent's Consortium, and then May, which is all of the school boards. They have set up a joint, I guess, committee in order to track the implementation of Kerwin. So I was selected as a representative to serve on that board. So not quite sure what it's going to look like. I think Dr. Marr is also on the St. Mary's County side of it for the school system, so at least we will hopefully have some firsthand knowledge of what is coming down the pike with Kerwin. And with that, let's go to Kathy.
I am at risk of perhaps stealing a little bit of Dr. Smith's thunder, but I'm going to share this because I suspect he would not share it in quite the same way. So everyone's aware that we have, over the last year, received funds from the federal government for, to help us with the challenges that we faced educationally because of COVID. And the last set of funds, ESER III, St. Mary's County Public Schools are scheduled to get $26 million. That money was appropriated through, was to be appropriated through the Maryland State Department of Education. I guess because of changes up at MSDE, those funds were not released for us to be able to start the beginning of our fiscal year, July 1st. We, at the time when the grant application was shared, we were the first and only school system to apply for those grant funds with very specific detailed program on what we plan to do with it. But it didn't go anywhere. And I know that Dr. Smith has shared that we were the first and only system to do so. I give absolute credit to Dr. Smith, to Mrs. Bailey, our chair, to Senator Bailey, who got together, got involved, and made some very important phone calls to Senator Carden and to Congressman Hogan, or Congressman Hoyer, and ultimately to Governor Hogan. Got them involved, and those funds were released conditionally, but they were released to us last evening. And it is, without the efforts of those individuals and all those who supported them, we would not have those funds. We would not be able to hire the teachers that we need to be able to implement the programs that will be important for our students. And it was a flurry of phone calls, and I suspect MSD is not going to be real happy with us, but our students need those monies. They have real consequences, and I want to thank all those people for putting themselves out there to do this. Because it's going to make a difference in the lives of our kids. So, sorry for stealing your thunder.
We will, we'll be touching on that definitely briefly as we get ready.
I knew you wouldn't do it that way, so.
No.
It's important for people to understand that. Very important for people to understand.
Shine the light out, not in. Blinds you if you shined it in.
All right.
Wait, Jim, do you have anything for your board report? You're muted.
You have to unmute there, Mr. Davis.
Sorry, I had you unmuted. Yes, I went to the waterfront last weekend to see Frankie Valli. A lot of younger folks may not know who he was, but in their 50s and 60s. And he's 87 years old, and he gave a wonderful, wonderful presentation, a lot of his old songs. What I didn't know was that they built an Antheum Theater down near where Hogate's is, and I didn't realize that just in the 16 years since I've retired, that waterfront's been completely redone. So if you ever get a chance to go down to Washington, down on the Main Avenue, it's really spectacular. I could sing a couple, a couple verses if you'd like, a falsetto, but maybe I'll pass on it. That's my report.
I think, Jim, the fact that you brought up Hogate's, which is a place I went when I was a child, that's back far enough for me, thanks.
All right, Scott, your turn.
All right, fantastic. We have a room full of people. We need to recognize for all the wonderful work that's happened this summer and some of the fantastic things that our children, our students have accomplished as we concluded the year and went to compete locally, statewide, and nationally. But before we do, there's obviously a great deal of attention and conversation about what's going on. Never lose sight of the fact that this room is full of adults who have spent their summer working with kids to recover, to fill gaps, to enrich and extend their learning, to make meaningful connections, to reincorporate themselves into the structure of a regular school. And again, our Twitter feed, if you want to feel good about the things that are going on in the world, and sometimes we focus on what's loudest, and what's loudest isn't necessarily the best. Come in and take a look at our Twitter feed. It's been really fantastic. And for everybody who has contributed to the Twitter feed so that we get this information out there, thank you so very much. Getting ready for the school year, we still have one more board meeting before we officially open, although the Chesapeake Public Charter School buses rolled this morning. Kids are in classes today. As we're getting prepared, all of the information is on our school site, www.smcps.org, and all the regular, old, run-of-the-mill stuff, open house information, registration information, transportation information, information about lunch. Lunch this year will be available for every single student, and school supply lists as we get ready to start our school year. It's all in one place, please be there. If we have been, so registration and people enrolling in schools, if they had been someplace else last year, we are back to the regular capacity at our high schools, our middle schools, and the majority of our elementary schools, with the exception of pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. And oftentimes, people wait till the last minute to enroll their child in kindergarten classes, and I ask you, I urge you, please go and do that now so that we make sure that we have a seat saved for your child. Preparing for school, as we do every single year, regardless of where we would be, we would do back-to-school vaccination and immunization clinics. We're doing that exact same thing and partnering with the St. Mary's County Health Department. They have dates on the 14th, the 16th, the 17th, the 18th, the 19th, the 20th, throughout the county, including some of our school sites will actually be hosting some of the clinics. It is appointment only. You go to their website, smchd.org/immunizations, or just the regular site and go to immunizations. You can get there, schedule an appointment. If your child is behind on immunizations, they need to get up to date on their immunizations. And oh, by the way, they will be offering COVID-19 vaccinations for any child 12 or older, and that is the approved Pfizer vaccination. So this is not out of the ordinary for any other school year, other than that last line, COVID-19 vaccinations will be available during the vaccination immunization clinics that we will be holding and coordinating with the St. Mary's County Health Department. So, the Maryland State Department of Education, they did release the ESER III funds for us at 5:00 o'clock last night, and we are so thankful for the staff, for their turnaround, for their attention, for their continued collaboration and cooperation with us. That money is imperative to run things like our virtual school that we are going to have as an available option for students. As many, as a few may know, the cutoff date for us to tell us that you wanted to go to virtual school was July 30th. So anybody who's contacted us after July 30th, we have placed them on the waiting list, and we placed them on the waiting list because we didn't know where our funding was for the program. We now know where the funding is for the program, so we will be revisiting all of that. But MSDE is requiring every single school system in the state of Maryland to submit and then publish online, make available publicly, the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan. We didn't name it, they named it. This is the same thing that we had to do last year. Last year, we had a return, a Safe Return to School, Safe Reopening Plan. The elements are very similar. They're doing it because the American Rescue Plan ESER relief funds require everybody to do this. So the complexity, there is no free money. Nobody ever gets money without there being a whole series of things that happen, including how are you going to spend the money, approval for how you're going to spend the money, how we're going to track it, how the money is going to impact the programs that you're going to be using, and then ultimately a reconciliation and an auditing after the fact. Money just doesn't go out and disappear. So we have to post a Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan. It will be up on our website later today. The deadline is Friday. There are a whole bunch of points within the plan that we have to address. There's a rubric that they sent us, after they sent us, that we got a couple of weeks ago that said, here are all the things that are in it. Don't worry, these are all the same things that had to be in the other plan, and they're all the things that we already do. You have to be equitable. You have to get stakeholder, and you have to, you have to make sure that you're, you know where kids are at the beginning of the year. You have to align to the Maryland College and Career Ready and Standards. You have to follow the law with regards to special education and 504 and Title I and the ADA. You have to follow the recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. You have to follow all the protocols for safe transportation. You have to track attendance. You have to communicate this to everybody. That's what I'm doing today. And you have to follow the MPSAA athletic program, and of course, we do because today is the first day for tryouts for all of our sports. So there's a whole bunch of stuff. It's in there. You'll see the rubric. You'll see the plan if you are so interested. But if you are not deeply interested, please know that we are doing it and it is available. In a, in a highlight, in a brief, our plan isn't that gigantic. We're going back to in-person instruction five days a week, 180 days a year, regular start, regular close. Because we have extra money, we have more, and we have more support. We're doing Fairlead Academy, Freshman Academy at all three of our high schools. We have the Virtual Academy. We are extending programs into the evening. We're adding more licensed clinical social workers and counselors and things to help our students. We are obviously aligned to all the standards, but we are also focusing on how we can do that in the most engaging way so that we accelerate and fill gaps and do all the things that all these ladies and gentlemen have been doing this summer with our kids, but we extend that throughout the entire year. We are technology-rich environments. 18 months ago, I couldn't have told you that. I can tell you that now. We are starting with a one-to-one device. Every child will have an assigned device. All of the devices will be wireless. All of the parking lots will be wireless. Fantastic, clean and healthy environments as always. And then the last, the collaboration with the St. Mary's County Health Department is ongoing. Dr. Brewster and I regularly communicate. All of the health professionals and student services regularly communicate. So our recovery and reopening plan, as required by the Maryland State Department of Education, because we receive money from the federal government, is going to be in the same place on our webpage. You'll see it on the homepage. It'll be right on the top, Recovery Plan. There's the actual highlighted link down below. If you want to go through it, you can take a look at it. We'll post this presentation as well with all the active links. But why a lot of people may be tuning in today is because within that plan, local school systems must follow procedures and safety protocols consistent with current guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, and it is part of the Maryland State Department Evaluation Rubric for our reopening plan. And the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, all of, it's centered on all of the other information that they have. The American Academy of Pediatrics doctors have come up with a great deal of guidance. The Centers for Disease Control have updated guidance as they go through, and I know people are like, well, you said you didn't have to wear a mask, then you have to wear a mask, then you didn't have to wear a mask. Somebody sent me a great analogy, love analogies and metaphors, for flying on a plane. When you're flying on a plane, when you take off, you have to do what?
Put a seatbelt on.
You have to put on your seatbelt, right? Okay, great, because you're taking off. Turbulence is anticipated, right? So you put on your seatbelt, you get up to cruising speed. Once you get up to cruising speed and it's nice and level, what do they say?
You may take your seatbelt off.
Take that seatbelt off, move about the cabin, right? We've all been able to do it, mad rush to the bathroom. When they think there's going to be turbulence, what does the captain do?
Please put your seatbelt back on.
Get back in your seat, put your seatbelt on! And we all do it. And nobody, like, nobody, it just makes sense, right? It just makes sense. So here they all are. Maryland Department of Health and Maryland Department of Education also sent out guidance at the end of July. When we got together last time, we said, we're waiting for guidance. They provided guidance. So there's a super long bunch of guidance that goes back, and if you filter through all of it, it basically says, when there is community transmission above a certain threshold, school systems should begin layering in preventative and strategies. Masking is the first strategy because it's the least intrusive to the operation of the school, before you abbreviate days or try to go to hybrid schedules or what have you. Masks are the first. Now, I will tell you that throughout this whole thing, there is a great ray of sunshine in the event that a school system goes to universal masking. If a school system goes to universal masking, the CDC has said that that will, that will create an exemption for close contact tracing. In the K-12 classroom, indoor classroom setting, a close contact definition excludes students who are within three to six feet of an infected student, laboratory confirmed or contract confirmed, if both the infected student and the exposed student corrected correctly and consistently wore well-fitting masks the entire time. Which means that for those who experienced at the end of last year, their child being in a classroom where somebody tested positive, and even though the child was wearing a mask, their child was wearing a mask, they were within six feet for more than 15 minutes over a 24-hour period of time, the health department required that person to quarantine their child for seven to 10 days. And we ended up quarantining large groups of people in classrooms, all classrooms, much larger. If we go to universal masking, there's no longer that consideration because they are recognizing if the child wears a mask, both children are wearing a mask, there's no reason to close, to isolate, to quarantine. That will be huge. And that will be huge because that means that we will allow, we will be able to get all of our 18,000 students back in school, some classrooms, 25 to 30 kids in a classroom, and if somebody tests positive, we'll notify everybody, but we don't start quarantining the class. We move on, we move on, we move on. This is an exceptionally important piece. And why is it important right now? It's important right now because the new cases are, they're exponentially growing in St. Mary's County. These are not my data charts. These are not my graphs. This comes from the St. Mary's County Health Department. That's all local data. And what you'll see is that as we ended in May and went through all of June and the beginning of July, the blue line represents anybody 19 years old or younger, how many cases there were daily per 100,000. So throughout the entire summer, when we did not require masks for anybody indoors, regardless of vaccination status, we recommended if you hadn't been vaccinated that you should wear a mask, but if it was, it was your choice. All summer long, you'll notice the transmission, the community transmission rate was exceptionally low. About halfway through July, we saw this number begin to rise steadily and then accelerate. That is why, two weeks ago, we changed, and through summer school, our elementary and middle school children had to wear masks. The last measure that we took on the 8th of August, there were 23.66 cases per 100,000 for the age group 19 to 0. That was the fastest growing group. That's a lot. That's a lot of cases. And if you aren't using a universal masking mandate and you aren't working in collaborative, with, in collaboration with the health department, that means that we could have 10, 15 kids positive, and then we have to quarantine large groups. All right. So that's the data. The CDC sets thresholds, and they say that if the, of community transmission, and they don't, they just group it all together, community transmission, and if you have nine cases in a week per 100,000, they consider that low. If you have 10 to 49 cases within a week per 100,000, that's considered moderate. If you have 50 to 99 cases per 100,000 in one week, they consider that substantial. And if you have 100 cases per 100,000 over a seven-day period, that's high. What St. Mary's County Public School will be enacting for the opening of school and what is written into our reopening plan is that if we are low to moderate transmission in the community, mask-wearing will be voluntary. And it will be predicated on if you, if you are not vaccinated or you're medically vulnerable, we strongly suggest that you wear a mask. Because there is COVID in the community, there's anywhere from one case to 49 cases within the community. So we suggest that you should wear a mask, but we don't mandate mask-wearing in any of our buildings and any of our classes under any circumstances. And that's where we were all summer. If we move into substantial, where we found ourselves last week, masks will be required for those not fully vaccinated. So that means that we will have to go into our elementary and middle schools because our kids are not eligible to be vaccinated, and we will ask them to wear masks. I'm sorry. We will require them to wear masks. And we will require them to wear masks because there are anywhere from 50 to 100 cases in the community, and that's a lot. And if we get to high, where there's over 100 cases, then honestly, we should all be doing our part. We are all going to do our part, and we are all going to wear masks in buildings until we see that trend reverse. And the benefit of doing that is we won't have to contact trace our kids. Okay? This will start, this is what's written into our plan. Masks will be required on buses all the time, no matter what. That's a federal mandate. There is no variance. That's the same for everywhere in the United States. This is our county data. This is from the St. Mary's County, the Health Department website. I have directed several people to it because they did not know it existed. It is everyone's responsibility to know the data in a county, and it is certainly the responsibility of people who are involved in education, who are going to gather groups of people together, and it certainly is of great concern to parents. So I have, we've overlaid our decision matrix on top of this, so when we're low to moderate, as we were all summer long, and we hope to get back to, we should get back to. If everybody gets vaccinated and we follow, we should be back down here again. Masks will be recommended for people not fully vaccinated, but everybody else will be able to go about their business. If we get into substantial, we will require those for who are not fully vaccinated. And for employees, we'll be talking about a way that we're able to get this information, and we'll be doing it in the least intrusive and most respectful ways. And then if we get into high, which is where we've been for the last two weeks, we're going to be putting forth a universal masking mandate. So what does that mean? That means that not today, because we want people to have a chance to digest all this information, we are also tracking all this data this week, but on Monday, August 16th, so next Monday, August 16th, face coverings and masks are going to be required for everybody in a St. Mary's County building. And the bus thing stays the same. So effective Monday, the open of business, we'll all be, we'll all be wearing masks. And we're hopeful that as a result of the community knowing what's going on, the masking that we're going to be doing within, good choices that people are making, and perhaps even more people making the decision to become vaccinated, that we'll see the data come down. Because what we're going to be doing is as the data comes down, every time I come to you before the board, we're going to take a look, look at the last two weeks' data. And if we go down into the next threshold and move to substantial, then we will be going back, and only people who are not vaccinated will have to wear masks. And as I am hopeful, we will finally get to the place where we have low to moderate spread throughout the community. We'll go back to masks being recommended and not required. But we will follow the local data to make decisions because that just makes sense. Pilot going up in the air, when we know there's going to be turbulence, we wear masks. We're taking off in three weeks, and we are going to take 18,000 people, and we're going to, well, really, over 20,000 people, and put them in the buildings. There's community spread of COVID. We know that there will be then COVID in our buildings, so we will buckle our seatbelts. We will put on our masks, and we will then enjoy the ascent. We will level off. We will find clean air, and we will have an opportunity to take off our masks and move about the cabin. This metaphor, by the way, came from Liz Leskin, and she, to be fair, she sent it to me, and I was like, boy, I really like that. She's, are you going to use it? And I had, oh, Liz, I'm going to use the Daylights On. All right. So there are going to be exceptions and conditions, and that's really important, especially with our little learners, and we learned so much over the summer. So whenever kids are actively eating and drinking, no, they don't have to wear a mask. They're going to go into the lunchroom, they're going to get their food, they're going to go sit down, they're going to take off their masks, they're going to eat, and that's going to be fine. When you're presenting to a group, all right, and the group is all masked, the presenter can take off the mask and present, and then when they're done presenting, put the mask back on. During a performance, when you're backstage, you're going to wear a mask while we're in high, all right, but then when you get on stage, you won't wear your mask. Because although the presentations were fantastic, it's really, there's a lot of projection that has to happen, and it'll be nice to see everybody's face. And then whenever we're outside, and I can assure parents that all of our teachers and parent educators and, we're going to be figuring out a million ways to get your kids outside, take off the mask, run around, and enjoy being kids back in school. Staff, it'll be basically the exact same thing, and we'll be working through all of this with staff as well. So with all of that, that's where we are. We're going to have a plan. The plan's going to go through. We will be sending a letter. We may have already sent a letter. We'll be sending a letter. we may have already sent a letter, we'll be sending a letter to all staff as we've been, as we're here. We're going to be sending a letter to all parents. We'll be tweeting and Facebooking and getting all the information out and giving everybody the opportunity to prepare for Monday with the masking mandate. And for everybody who has a deeply and passionately felt opinion, certainly you can send it to us, but this is where we are, this is the way we're going to be doing it, this is what's built into our plan, and I think it's the safest way to go about what our ultimate goal is. Our ultimate goal is to get every child back in school every day, full day, Monday through Friday, with all the regular and fun stuff that wraps out their time back in school, and get them as close to normal. And then we'll work on getting everybody vaccinated, getting the numbers down, and having masks off and all of that. So.
Can I ask, or just interject for a quick?
Sure.
Okay. So I know that we discussed it before, you and I, about, if you could go back to the last slide, for special needs students, those that are doing speech
Yes.
Or have articulation issues that need, nonverbal, that need to learn how to, you know, for speech is, you know, very important about not having the mask on.
Yes. Every, so all special education students and all the special education programs, Compass and Sale, all of those, they're all operating with modified version of this, most appropriate for the learning needs and behavioral elements with the children. This is, this is the, this is the general, broad, large view.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that parents, because I've had numerous parents contact me, and I wanted to make sure that that was actually put out there for everyone to hear.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. And so with that, I'm then going to conclude my remarks. SMCP, concerns@smcps.org, boe@smcps.org. Any email that you send, it goes directly to my office, everybody sees it, it goes directly to the board, please know that, you know, that is, that is a way to do it. Also, for our return to school, there is actually a link as well that's embedded in there for you to provide your comments back to us, so we can hear what you're thinking and what's on your mind. But right now, our goal is to get 18,000 kids back in school.
I have one more thing. The open house schedules are posted on the SMCPS website, so I've had a couple of questions about that. They're all there
Yep.
In the link.
Absolutely.
Can't tell you off the top of my head, but it's definitely there.
Yes.
So.
It's also, it's in several places, and it's also linked in the big, huge slider box that says back to school and open house.
That's where it is, yes.
Yes.
When it feeds through.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
Anyone else have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Then I thank.
Let's recognize some incredible people.
Yes, exactly. Thank you for your patience. Who is up? Dr. Mar and Ms. Bachner.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It is my pleasure to recognize the extraordinary work done throughout the summer for our summer recovery program. Over the last year and a half, as our schedule and our lives were interrupted by the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, we all faced challenges. This summer, across all of our schools, the summer recovery program provided instructional opportunities to address learning gaps for students who may have struggled academically during this time. 1,967 students participated in face-to-face, over 400 in virtual learning programs, and over 60 students in our sale program. These students were supported by over 400 teachers and support staff. Students had the opportunity to earn credits or recover learning and access social, emotional learning supports throughout the six-week program to help them get ready for the coming school year. There were great successes this summer, as 998 credits were earned by students at the secondary level. Additionally, beyond recovery, several students were able to accelerate their learning through Imagine Learning Modules, and we had a peak of 567 students during just one week in July. Today, we thank all of our students, all of our staff who worked throughout the summer in support of our students. It has been a team effort from every department, school, office, across the system, and we thank each person for their extraordinary dedication and work. Our site leaders are here today and on the screen, representing the staff from their respective summer school programs. These site leaders planned and coordinated the site-based program activities, communicated with staff and families, and managed site recovery schedules. In addition, they problem-solved, encouraged, and managed issues at their school, including both academic and behavioral issues, of which there were very few, by the way. They managed, they coordinated, they led. We are grateful to these site leaders and our recovery teams at all the school sites for their work, their dedication, and ongoing efforts. We also thank our principals, assistant principals, coordinators, central office staff for all of the programs across our system this summer, and we thank our staff in our virtual programs, led by the Department of Assessment and Accountability. I want to give special thanks to the leader for these programs who took on the role of coordinating our summer programs at the system level. Stephanie Stone stepped up in amazing ways, from the early stages of staffing the program to managing schedules, to student enrollment, to coordinating resources, and helping each site throughout the summer. Stephanie, we are so thankful for you. If you would come forward so you can join, so we can appropriately thank you and also help recognize our site leaders. Let's give Stephanie a round of applause. So Stephanie's going to help me hand out the certificates, and Dr. Smith, if you would also join us up here.
But before I do, I'm going to go back there and grab our hands. In the event that there is handshaking and you wish to then sanitize, we don't, we take no, we take no offense.
Okay. I'm going to call everyone on the list, though some are not able to join us because they had activities going on at their school that they didn't want to miss, because we have two days left of the program. So from Benjamin Bannaker Elementary, and I don't believe she is here, Jacqueline Pisano. From Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary, Jackie Snyder. I don't see Jackie in the room. From Choptekon High School, both
Oh, we see her.
Ashley Gallo and Rachel Sitko.
Do this, put it in this hand. Can I do this?
And we're going to, we're going to have quite a few, so we're going to just spread across the dais, and then we're going to do a group photo. From the Forest Center, Lisa Lewis. From Esperanza Middle School, Kellen Stifler. From Evergreen Elementary and Town Creek Elementary, Kristen Ganley. I don't see Kristen. From George Washington Carver, Allison Ford. From Great Mills High School, Oscar Feaster.
Mr. Feaster also did a lovely job with Commissioner Morgan, who came down and visited the program.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you.
From Greenview Knolls and Green Holly Elementary, Vanessa Hodge. From Hollywood Elementary, Tammy Adams. Lenartown Elementary School, Kimberly Knight. Lenartown High Schools, Kelly Bridges. See Kelly in the room. From Lenartown Middle School, Cheryl Rayly. From Lexington Park Elementary, Renee McBride. Don't see Renee. From Lenartown, excuse me, Letty Marshall Dent Elementary and White Marsh Elementary, there's a three-person team of Donna Widener, Candace Bertham, and Lindsay Toothaker.
That's your Candace. Be the representative.
I'll take one of the two.
Margaret Brent Middle School has Diana Johnson. From Mechanicsville and Dinerd, Nicole Shotwell. From Oakville Elementary School, Kristy Wink. From Park Hall and Ridge, Jennifer Kearns. From Piney Point Elementary, Leila Lynch. And from Spring Ridge Middle School, Phoebe Camerer.
She also did a wonderful job hosting Commissioner Morgan at Spring Ridge.
And there's Stephanie Stones there. And while they're not site coordinators, I see the team from the virtual programs. If you all would come here, just to recognize as well, we want to thank you all for all of your work through Sunday. Again, a lot of work has gone into this summer's recovery programs. We could not do it without all of you and the many dozens of people you represent at the school sites. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Bunch you up like grapes a little bit, squish in a little bit, you know, do that middle, cheat there.
I don't want to be a racist in the background.
No, oh my gosh.
That's awesome. Thank you, thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you. I mean, I know we asked all of the teachers and staff and everyone to do an incredible job last year through the 2021 school year, and for you guys to step up again
For six weeks.
During the summer, I can't tell you how grateful we are. And most of all, you know, Kathy alluded to it, that it's really all about the kids. So all of the other, you know, stuff that's out there, it all comes down to getting those kids across the, across this, you know, the stage of graduation. And, you know, especially to my high school and middle school people, I mean, you guys just did phenomenal. I did tour Choptekon while my daughter was taking senior pictures, thank Mrs. Gallo. And just the energy and the way that everyone kept the students engaged while they were in there, you know, on a summer day at, you know, 11 o'clock in the morning, I just can't thank you enough, so.
And it sounds like there's been incredible success. Mrs. Gallo shared with us their early news. I know the board looks forward to hearing much more about that, but that's just awesome.
So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Not leaving out my elementary school.
You are the ones who laid the foundation upon all others.
Yes, yes, yes. As well, so we just can't thank you enough for stepping up, so.
Fantastic.
Thank you all.
Hold on. Is hand sanitizer, I sanitized before, just so you know. For all intents and purposes, I'm dipped in sanitizer.
It's the new aftershave.
It is the new, it is the scent of the twenties.
And I know Scott didn't make his speech, but we're not offended if you leave.
Yes, no, please, you have a million things to do, and so, yes. Sorry, usually I do that for everybody. We take no offense if you leave after you've been done.
That's right. Yes, yes, you're good. Keep things moving.
Yep. Good morning.
Good morning.
It is so nice to start a board meeting with recognitions like this, and so I'm going to continue the trend. So today I come before you and I thank, oh, thank you, Dr. Mar. He was going to help me, but no, he's really helped me. I come before you to recognize some amazing students from Great Mills High School that have represented us well at the secondary level Scientific Challenge Global Finals Team for Destination Imagination, DI.
Sat down too soon.
The batteries are dead.
It's been a long time since it's been used.
Destination Imagination is an organization that promotes innovation, collaboration, and creativity. Its STEAM principles enable tens of thousands of students to compete in one of six challenges, each with a different focus: technical, engineering, scientific, fine arts, improvisational, and service learning. Over the past 10 years, Team Turn Up The Heat of Great Mills High School has participated in the Destination Imagination program under many different names, but the group's ambition, drive, and spirit has remained constant. This remarkable group of students' hard work has led them to win first at the Maryland State Competition this year, which punched their ticket to a sixth appearance at global finals and their best finish at second place in their challenge against top high school teams from around the world. Despite the virtual nature of the 2021 season, the team persevered to fulfill the objectives of their challenge: create a five-minute documentary-style video illustrating the effects of breaking a scientific law. They chose the first law of thermodynamics tirelessly researching, constructing, and filming over the course of six months to produce their end product, a story about a perpetual motion machine gone wrong, taking place in a built-from-scratch laboratory set, complete with a dynamic Phoenix body puppet and completely carefully engineered Rube Goldberg machine. And by the way, I'd like to see all of that. At this time, I ask the superintendent to please join as we recognize the members of the team. Oh, and before I go on, Dr. Hyville, your principal, was not able to be here, but he did want me to make sure that I read these greetings to you. Please extend to the group and the Board of Education how very proud we are of this exceptional group of young ladies who have represented at Great Mills in such a positive and meaningful way. We are very proud of them and all of their accomplishments at the state, national, and international levels. Thank you. So, the members of the team. Annalee Johnson. Susan Rahm, who is not able to be with us tonight or this morning. Kaia Gonzalez. Gonzalez, sorry about that, Kaia. And I also want to recognize the team manager for 10 years, I believe, which is Mary Beth An amazing accomplishment, and we had to get these students in today because four of the five students are on their way to college in a couple weeks, they graduated seniors, so congratulations on many levels.
Would you like to? Because they've been here many times.
I want to be, I want to be this great.
Please, please do. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. And again, they, they can leave too.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much for your patience.
And we'll make sure that we nail Susan first.
Okay, let's see. Public comment?
Yes.
Okay. So Jay, we will call up the first person, I have to read the statement. You called, well, they, we're going to use this podium up here.
Dr. Mar. Thank you.
It's Laurie Zartman.
Okay, so.
Ms. Mary.
Oh, Mary, hold on.
Oh, may I say something, and I can't help myself? I want to say congratulations to the students because I have always said, and Kathy was there, that we were the best in the state, we're the best in the nation, and we're the best in the world. And I would say that, and I meant it seriously, and our students are. So congratulations to them and everybody that helped them, and I know the board members feel the same way that I do, that we have high expectations and our students are best globally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the public comment statement is that we welcome public input on policies and issues, we take the time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticism of individual staff or students. Concerns about that should be brought to the level closest to the situation or directed to the superintendent. We will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students. Keep in mind, we sit as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals, so we cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that we might have to hear. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Your comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. And if you have any written comments, if you give them to Jay, he can include them as part of the minutes and onboard docs for the meeting. So with that, Jay will call the first speaker, and we will begin.
Good morning. Thank you for having the chance to speak. My name is Laurie Zartman, and I'm a resident here in St. Mary's County with children in the school system. I'm here to offer another perspective and urge each of you to respect I'm here to offer another perspective and urge each of you to respectfully reconsider the decision to mandate masks in our schools and instead allow it to continue to be a personal family choice. Opinions on this issue vary wildly, I understand, and I respect the decision of those that choose to mask, but it should remain just that, a choice, left to each family, to each parent. I agree with you, Dr. Smith, that we should, that leadership, that we do need leadership, and we need to be consistent and backed by true numbers and data. We have seen over the last year and a half that the CDC mask guidance and mandates have not and will not eradicate a virus, nor will it slow the spread. I have data from multiple states and other countries that show mask usage with no correlation to case positive, to the case positive rate. I'll provide gladly these resources in an email. Even so, positive cases do not mean hospitalizations, and hospitalizations do not mean death. We must not forget that we are talking positive case rates of a virus that is still 99.9% survivable for anyone healthy under the age of 65. This survivability rate is similar to the flu. Are we attempting to mandate protocol now for all viruses? In fact, our children here in St. Mary's County have a greater chance of death or physical harm by drug overdose or car accidents. We know too much about this virus to mandate masks based on case rate. Although infectious, as with most respiratory viruses, it is still 99.9% survivable. It still responds well to therapeutics. It still has little to no effect on our children. We know that the size of the virus particle in microns is significantly smaller than the pores of those masks. It is akin to trying to keep mosquitoes out of your backyard with a chain-link fence. And since the seatbelt analogy is popular, if masks were proven to be as effective as seatbelts, that argument might stand. They are simply not. And to the turbulence analogy, a mask would be like putting a piece of paper on my lap to protect me from turbulence. Masks should be a personal family choice. No medical decision should ever be mandated by the government. Logic and intellectual honesty tells us that my mask doesn't make your mask work, nor would my vaccine make your vaccine work. If someone is scared of driving, should we mandate biking for all? I'm afraid we are at the top of a slippery slope. If we do not make waves, this will embolden the powers that be to eventually segregate kids based on personal medical choices. This would be awful, and not a path we want to go down as a community. These kids have already been through so much mentally and socially this past year that they need a sense of freedom and normalcy that they've experienced for a little bit this summer. We don't need mask mandates to invade our schools and take away the freedom of each family to make that decision for themselves. We cannot make a blanket medical mandates out of fear and anxiety. We must make informed, rational decisions, effective, and instead focus our energies on therapeutics while allowing mask usage to remain a personal family choice. Thank you.
Elizabeth Stewart. Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Stewart. I'm a resident here, been in this county almost 10 years. I have two children, one of which is school age. I myself am an educator, have a background in it, been involved with teaching ESL with a master's degree for over 10 years. I wrote to this board two months ago. I wrote in regards to mandatory masking, and I requested a response about the clinical studies that you all are using to support your decision. I did not receive a response from one person on this board. I received a response from a secretary, and it was simply stated that the board follows the CDC's advice and the Maryland State Education's advice. I wrote back requesting to know the studies that you all are using because each of you are the elected officials for this county. No response. And I think that the reality is that you couldn't respond because that was truthful. You all are responding to the guidance of the CDC regardless of whether or not it is scientific, regardless of whether or not there are clinical studies to back it up. The reality is, according to the CDC, that since March of 2020 and the entire country of 75 million school-aged children, there has only been 349 COVID deaths. And the state of Maryland, according to our own education website, in that same age category, from the same period of time, we are at 11 deaths. And we have had the most stringent take to COVID. Our students have been either out of school or had limited access to school and have been masked more than almost any other state in the country. If you look at the state of Florida, who has been demonized by the mainstream media, demonized by the CDC, and has been open through that entire time, March of 2020 to now with optional masks, their death rate at that age group, zero at 18, is 16. And their population is significantly greater than us, their population is also significantly more geriatric than ours. What we are doing is making no difference, and the reality is, each of you know that. Each of you know that COVID-19 is a respiratory virus that isn't going to go away. Respiratory viruses are not going to go away. And thankfully, this disease primarily infects, according to the CDC, at a death rate and/or hospitalization rate, the elderly. This is not a risk of children. And so it's gaslighting to continue telling our public that we need to be doing mask mandates based on cases. The cases don't matter. This is about, is this a risk to our children? We are in a crisis in this country of courage and prudence. We need to look at risk and make decisions based on that and not based on non-scientific data that is just fear-mongering. Thank you.
Sarah Penrod.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sarah Penrod. I'm a high school world language teacher, currently serving as time-release president for the Education Association of St. Mary's County. I'm here today with Elaine Deems, who's a parent educator at Leonardtown Middle School, currently serving as East Mick vice president. I want to start off by saying congratulations to all of the educators who were here today, some of them my former colleagues at Chopta Khan, for everything that they have done throughout the summer and what they will continue to do throughout this upcoming school year. And I want to take the time to thank Dr. Smith, Dr. Mar, Dr. Walker, Dr. Montgomery, and Dr. Farrell for continuing to meet with East Mick many, many times throughout the summer. Sometimes when I'm all over the, you know, tri-state area, sometimes when Liz is at the beach, you took the time to Zoom with us, meet with us, and not just listen to our concerns, but allow us to be a part of the conversation, not just on COVID-related issues, but just school issues because it's a school year. Finally, East Mick really appreciates having a data-driven plan rather than a plan based on public opinion. It's the smartest and safest way to go for this upcoming school year. It's the best we could possibly do. So thank you for allowing us to be a part of that conversation, and thank you for continuing to look at the data provided by the Health Department. I did reach out to Dr. Brewster, but unfortunately, she is super busy. But we do continue to monitor the data as well, and I am very pleased to hear that, Dr. Smith, you will be too. As far as our members, it's really unfortunate that there is no state or federal plan to continue to fund COVID leave at this time, and we very much understand that the school system does not have the money to fund it out of their own pocket. But we are very grateful that you are working with us to come up with some sort of plan to help our staff figure out what the best way to go for them is. It's going to be another challenging year, but I know that every single one of our educators are prepared to meet the demands and challenges. They have worked tremendously hard over the last, what is it, almost two years. They worked all summer long, even those that didn't work summer school, oh, they worked. They worked all summer, and they're ready to go. They're ready to bring back all students, but they're also ready to make sure that all of our students and staff remain safe. So thank you, Dr. Smith, thank you, the Board of Ed, and thank you to all the educators who are here, all central office, and teachers and support staff, because you are educators as well, for all of the work that you've done. And parents, thank you for helping your students to get through that challenging year last year and what you will do to continue to help your students this year.
Sarah Williams.
Good morning. I'm a pretty nervous person, but I'm here to address this board because I have some serious concerns about accountability. And the accountability of this board, is it going to be to the parents or to the state? Is it going to be about the students, or is it going to be about getting government funding for the schools? And my concern is that I feel like if, my wonder is, if you had asked the parents, if you had said, hey, parents, we need funding for the school because we need to do XYZ, do you think maybe, or, our options are to get a government grant that would cause us to have to do XYZ in order for your kids to attend? Or maybe you guys could step up and help us fund these things? I don't know for sure about this, but I know I, as a parent, would have stepped up and helped fund without the government funding, the extra government funding, because I know that as a community, we do better than as a state. At the smaller level of government, we have the power to change lives, whereas from a much bigger level, they don't see us, they just know we're a number. And I say this as someone who was in the military. I was in Iraq for two years. I saw what it was like when children lose hopelessness. I saw the look in their eyes, and I saw them selling casts and disgusting things on the road and just wanting somebody to pay attention to them because they weren't seen, because they didn't matter anymore and they were thrown away to the streets. And now you, because of this funding, we have to put masks on our children, we take away their identity, we take away their ability to be with other people, and that is their God-given right and something that they need to do. And surely, this is not about the science, because a five-year-old could do the experiment that shows you that the mask does not work. And I, and I didn't really think about it at first because I thought, oh, well, masks, no big deal. But then I began to think about those women. I like saw, superimposed, those women in Kuwait, in Qatar, who wear the full garb all over their face. This wasn't the way it was in Iraq, but this was the transition to something way more evil about, and it's, it's not about religion, it's not about faith, it's about control. It's about controlling the people and controlling our children and training them in a way that God didn't mean. And I'm asking this board to think about these children in the God-given way, their God-given rights to do what's right and for our children, for our families. And I'm asking this board to ask the people what they want, think about what they want, not the government. And that's all I have to say. Thank you all.
Dorothy Andrews.
Hello.
How are you?
Good morning.
Superintendent, board members, my name is Dorothy. I am a resident in Callaway, Maryland, and I'm here today because my children can't be, they have to work. So behind me, that you don't see, are five adults and with children that are school-aged. I'm hoping that, not only listening to me, but to others, that you will revisit what you have decided to do with the mask recommendations and social distancing for our schools. Parents and grandparents, they don't have peace right now. I heard from Dr. Smith this morning on how you are facing your decision about the wearing of masks when our students return. I've been looking at the Southern Maryland Health Department numbers also, and there's too many variables needed to answer why COVID is up. How many students? How many of them were students? What was their severity? How many of them were vaccinated? I'm still not understanding why people are being tested after they've been injected with the vaccine. I'm still baffled by that. But I've also been listening to not only the CDC or other federal organizations, that's what happened last year when this was mandated, but then the schools went virtual. I'm not sure how many families actually pulled their children out to homeschool, but we did. The decision was announced so late that everyone was scrambling to figure out what they were going to do. Families were under tremendous stress. Just recently, there have been experts like Dr. Dan Stock from Indiana saying, "Everything recommended by the CDC and the State Board of Health is contrary to all the rules of science." I am submitting his transcript. His testimonies and others have been very informative. How many of us have experienced chickenpox? Common sense will tell you that herd immunity works best, and our children's immunity systems have been compromised by this past year. Thankfully, this summer gave them time to attend social events, swimming, just hanging out. Won't wearing masks weaken their immune system again? Remember, their immunity needs to be strengthened before winter begins. The masks themselves are another issue. There has been testing of masks after one-day use. The analysis dictated, detected 11 alarmingly dangerous pathogens on the masks, included is the research that I found. I'm almost done. This journey, this journey that all of us have taken together has not been easy. You have done your best that you could relying on guidance. Parents want their children returning, but not this way. In closing, in March 2020, the virus went from overwhelming the hospitals, which was supposed to be only a two-week, to what we have today. By placing the students' interests first should be your only priority. Keeping them healthy is important, but it isn't your priority. It's the parent's institution under God, our Creator, and we haven't delegated it to the Health Department, the CDC, the NIH, teachers' unions, or even the governor. We're saying no to masks. Make it optional, and I think that most parents wouldn't mind. Thank you for your time.
Is that all?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. The next item is approval of the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Let's see, our first action item is Mr. Thompson with school bus contracts.
Good morning. All right, good morning. I'm here today to ask approval for the bus contractor agreement and the spare bus agreement for the 2021-2022 school year. It's always the fun at the start of the school year, getting all the buses ready to roll and getting all the agreements in place. This year, we have 42 school bus contractors. They're going to provide 164 regular route school buses, 29 special needs school buses, and 53 spare school buses. We have 17 school buses that have reached the end of their 12-year cycle, and they will be replaced this year. We have 14 school buses right now that have reached the end of their first six-year contract, and they'll be renewed for another six-year contract. We have 53 spare buses that'll receive a one-year agreement. One contract this year has been transferred from one contractor to another. We have a modified four-year contract for approval and then one currently unassigned contract. The formula changes for this year, so the PVA, the calculation, we started using the prime rate as requested or recommended by the legislative auditors a number of years ago, and the prime rate did decrease this year. ago, and the prime rate did decrease this year by 1.75%, which did decrease our PVA payment going forward into this year. Our hourly payments this year will be, you know, $20.95 per hour plus a 26.5 fringe percentage, which was approved in the budget that went forward. There's no maintenance rate increase. The fuel rate, we do take into account the sales tax, Maryland's diesel fuel sales tax, and the federal excise tax is decreased when calculating our fuel amounts. And so I'm asking today that the Board of Ed approve the school bus contracts, the bus agreements, and the spare bus agreements for this coming school year.
All right, does anyone have any questions? Judy? Rita?
The 53 spare bus agreements, is that for like going on field trips or if something breaks? Because it seems like a lot.
Yeah, so we, we normally actually have about 65, so we've seen a big decrease this year. Over COVID, some of the contractors make decisions, but those buses are used for when a bus breaks down, when a field trip, those are field trip buses are included in that, so there's quite a few of those. And for other things as needed, if we have students, special circumstances of, say, McKinney-Vento students or foster care students we need to transport for those purposes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Kathy?
No questions, thank you.
Jim or Mary?
No questions.
Questions? Thank you.
All right, then may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the bus contractor agreement and spare bus agreement for the 21-22 school year as detailed on the list provided by staff.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And Jeff, you can just roll right into the Health and Welfare Trust. Look at that, Scott, they're so quick with that.
Well, they make it look easy, you know. These are, these are practice professionals. I'm a, I'm an amateur.
So for our second item today, for the Transportation Department, we want to request approval for the payment to be made by the St. Mary's County Board of Education to the School Bus Contractors Health and Welfare Trust in the amount of $421,800. So a little bit of background again, is the, this started in 2003, it was a joint collaboration between St. Mary's County Public Schools and the St. Mary's School Bus Contractors Association. It provided an opportunity for all of our full-time contracted bus drivers to have access to a healthcare plan, as also with several other benefits. St. Mary's County Public Schools provides the annual contribution, and any yearly deficits are the responsibility of the trust and not SMCPS. And all the excess funds that may be left over from one year to another remain in the trust. The program is available to all of our full-time contracted bus drivers and full-time contracted bus attendants. And this year, we have 164 regular route buses and 29 contracted special needs buses, so that means 29 drivers, 29 attendants. The management of the trust is still taken care of by Insurance Solutions under John Frank and Associates, who were acquired on May 15, 2015, but John Frank still remains the administrator. St. Mary's County School Bus Contractors Association, they have a healthcare committee that reviews and makes adjustments to the benefits package and the prices that the drivers and attendants would pay. So the, the benefit trust includes health insurance, a reimbursement benefit card, vision, and dental. The contribution, so we contribute $1,900 per regular route bus, and then $3,800 per special needs route bus. The healthcare trust is audited by asking, asking, and they've never found any issues with it. The legislative auders also look at the healthcare trust plan, and they've never had any recommendations or any concerns with the healthcare trust. So again, I'm asking today for approval for the payment of $421,800 to the healthcare trust.
Judy, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions.
Kathy?
No questions. This is something that comes before us every year, and it's pretty straightforward.
All right. Mary or Jim?
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just glad that we're able to continue to do this. I know just not all school systems offer this benefit to the bus drivers, so once again, thank you for taking all of our employees into consideration. I mean, technically, they're not our employees, but all of our people that work on behalf of our students. So, okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve payment of $421,800 to the St. Mary's County School Bus Contractors Health and Welfare Trust, which will cover the 2021-2022 school year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thank you. Can I have one item for the opening of schools? So the school bus stop locator to look up your bus stop, that will be open and available starting on Monday. We can't open it before the end of summer school because they're linked together. So starting Monday, people can look up their bus stop and school locator online to find out where their bus is. And also, please use the Here Comes the Bus app.
Here Comes the Bus app, the greatest app ever.
People love it. You can see your bus, it tells you when you show up, so that'll start to be available starting next week. Everybody can log in and get signed up for that.
Right, and everyone, they do their practice routes, the, what, the week before?
On the 19th, next Thursday.
Yes, on the next Thursday. So anyone who is going to work between 6:30 and 9 o'clock, there will be more buses on the road, so.
Well, unfortunately, with this summer, everybody feels like it's just a bit of continuation.
There's just a lot more.
It's been very confusing for people because there are people who don't have children in the system. Were not aware that we were providing summer school in the way that we did with transportation, and they were very confused by the number of buses that were on the road. So I have been doing a lot of sharing of information over the course of this summer about that.
Indeed, indeed. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Mr. Watson, Artificial Turf Design Services.
Mr. Thompson set the bar pretty high. Let me see if I can.
He was pretty fast.
He was pretty quick.
Did this as quickly as he did.
I noticed nobody's closing out after the non.
Yeah, no.
They're leaving it off. They're making it more difficult for the next person.
I'll do that. I'll close them out.
There you go, thanks.
Because you know Scott didn't close it out and he busted it.
Oh, yeah. He closed the whole thing and we had to restart the system.
So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. I'm here to seek Board of Ed approval to enter into a contract with Athletic Field Consultants Incorporated for artificial turf design services. The artificial turf design services include many things such as drawing, surveys, shop drawings, carpet design, and many other things that we would need to do to eventually hopefully move forward for potential purchase and installation of synthetic turf athletic fields at all three of our high schools. Procurement and funding, as you are well aware, our Commissioners of St. Mary's County approved an allocation of $2.5 million. That's sitting currently in our fiscal year 2022 Local Capital Improvement Plan for artificial turf fields at each of our three high schools. We are requesting $300,000 of that $2.5 million for the design process to begin. It's really important to understand that this is, this, hopefully, this approval today will prepare us to move forward if and when full funding is approved to do that project at all three of our high schools. Just want to note that this is the same vendor that St. Mary's County Recreation and Parks utilized for their process, for their six artificial field turfs that we currently have in our county. If full funding is provided, the total cost at all three high schools will be between $4.6 million and $4.7 million for artificial turf at all three of our high schools. This has been a conversation that has been ongoing for many years in St. Mary's County, many years across the country, many years across the state. Personally, I've, my high school field was, had artificial turf in the mid-'90s, so it's been a long conversation. I'm glad we are having it, and I look forward to working through this project if and when it is fully funded. Our fall installation is highly recommended for us versus a summer installation, if possible, if approved, if funded, because there's about a 100-day in-and-out process for a company to do everything they need to do to tear out the existing field and put in the artificial turf field. That would get us through into our spring season, beginning March 1st. And with that, I'm here today again for approval, that I recommend that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
Judy, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. When is the anticipated end date of designing the fields? Like, how long would it take?
So a few weeks to months, most likely. We are shooting, hopefully, again, fully funded, fully approved, we are shooting for sometime in early winter, November to December timeframe to begin, if we were to begin during this winter process.
Okay, thank you. And if we don't receive the full funding, will the design just be sitting until we receive the funding?
Correct. So if, if full funding is not approved, this year, it could be approved next year or in future years. If that is the case, then we would have a design ready to go, and our process would be shorter.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Rita?
It said that all three locations would simultaneously take place, so they have enough, I guess, workers or whatever in order to accomplish this?
Yes, ma'am, so I'm really glad you.
Right. Well, yeah, this is just for the design. This isn't to award the contract to anyone to replace the field. It's just for them to do the design.
Okay, I thought, well, I know that was for the design, but I didn't know, it says installation will occur at all three locations simultaneously. That's what I was asking.
Correct. It would, if, again, if fully funded, if fully approved, it would occur simultaneously at all three locations. So we have said many times, and the county commissioners have said many times about equity, we would not want to, unless we were forced to, do one field each year for a few years. You know, how do you pick that? How do you decide that? Who gets it first? Who gets it last? It's pretty difficult. And in this case, it's actually cheaper for us to do all three simultaneously because they have all the resources and they can kind of deploy all those resources all at once for a short period of time versus over the years, moving equipment back and forth, securing contractors and stone and things like that that they will need to complete the project.
And I think when they did it for Parks and Rec, they did do, they did them, they did, yeah, Chaptico and Chancers, they did them simultaneously as well.
Okay, okay.
But again, this is just to, and I know.
Just design.
This is just design, but I saw that part on there and I was.
Don't want to put the cart before the horse quite yet, but thank you. Very excited.
Kathy?
I think it's also important to note that if indeed the Commissioners decide to fund this, part of their thought process, as I understand it, is that we would develop a memorandum of understanding with Park and Recs so that when the school system was not using those fields, for instance, weekends or perhaps during the summers, that those fields would be added to the fields that Park and Rec have in order to provide the opportunity for travel teams to bring tournaments in for, so like a lacrosse tournament or a soccer tournament or something else. Am I correct in that?
Those have been the conversations. The, keep in mind that right now, the county commissioners have put forth and provided to St. Mary's County Public Schools $2.5 million in this current CIP to move this project forward. We recognize that we're going to, to fully realize it, when we have the design coming back, it'll be about another $2.2 to $2.3 million, $2.5 million. Just as a little preview, when we do our final reconciliation of all of our monies for the 2021 school year and come before you, we may be engaging in a conversation how we may be able to partner and use our funds to round out the cost, to make sure that this gets done. We believe it is an absolute priority to do it this year while we have great consensus between the county commissioners and the, and the board that this is a, this is a priority. Certainly, when all of the fields are done, the goal is to have a thriving local economy and opportunity for drawing people down into the county to compete, as opposed to our people leaving the county to compete elsewhere.
Right. And I will say that there is a big difference in playing on a grass field versus a turf field, and there are lots of thoughts about which is better. The challenge for some of our teams, for many of our teams, is that the difference in how play happens, it's much faster on a turf field, and by not having the opportunity to compete on a routine basis and practice on a, on a turf field, that puts our teams at a fairly significant disadvantage. And so it has been a conversation that's been carried on over many, many, many years. I, I hope that we'll be able to accomplish this. I guess we will see what happens. I've, I've made clear before that I want to make sure that we don't take away track lanes when we put these fields in. Mrs. Bailey tells me that that is not the plan, because it's important for us to be able to offer our tracks as smack meet venues, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that you all have kept that in mind as you have looked at all of this, and also appreciate that you are looking to make sure that each of the schools are the same in, at least in the layout of the fields. So thank you very much for bringing this forward. I, I hope that we have a positive report and, and that we will be able to move forward with this so that our teams will be very, much more competitive.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mary or Jim?
First, first, I would like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for their support of this project and because they see it as a priority, that they have allocated $2.5 million in the fiscal 2022 budget for this to happen, and I thank them very much for their support of this effort. And it's good that it's going to be at all three high schools, and they will be put in simultaneously, and that will provide equity to all three of our high schools. So, thanks, Commissioners, Mr. Watson, Superintendent Smith, and the Board of Ed's support of this plan.
Jim?
Okay.
I have a question. All right. So for the design contract, are we going to be just including the football fields, or does this also include the neighboring soccer fields, field hockey, and other sports such as that?
Great question, Judy. So the, the actual stadium field would include a surface and lines and a playing surface for all of the sports that play on the stadium field. So it would just be the stadium field, not the accompanying practice fields, but it would include all, for all sports that are played on the stadium field.
Right, so, so your soccer and your field hockey games that are played under the lights at the football stadiums would have access to the field when they, when they do the schedules?
So this is just for the playing fields, not the practice fields?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
And it is, it is approximately $1.5 million per field, so if there, if there is somebody out there that would like to also do our practice fields, I am all for it.
Put that on our grass court.
Once again, just so we're all perfectly clear and there's no confusion, just the design phase.
This is just.
Just the design.
We will come back before you with all the design and then how it will be paid for.
Right, exactly. Simply design, so. All right, with that, may I have a motion?
I have one question. Can you see me?
No.
No, we cannot.
You can't see me?
No.
Well.
I'd ask your question. Go ahead, we can hear you.
Oh, you, but you need to see me because if I raise my hand. Okay, will the marching band have an opportunity to practice on this field as well?
Yes, ma'am. The, the field will be open to all sports and performance groups at the school. And it would certainly add a, added, if we were to have a band competition on a turf field, that would certainly be a much better venue and atmosphere for a band competition than a natural grass field.
May I make the motion, please?
Sure.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the use of $300,000 of Available Capital Improvements Fund for Architect Fields Consultants Incorporated to begin design services for the potential installation of one synthetic turf field at each SMCPS high school.
Okay, and Mary, I'm just going to amend it because the, the name of the company is Athletic Field Consultants, Inc.
What did I say?
Architect. So just, just so we have the correct firm on, on our action item, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Let me close some of these out for the next person.
Now I can see them.
Yeah, now we can see them. Oh, look at that, he's even setting up for Meghan.
Very good.
Thank you.
What a team player. Helping me out.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
It's been a while.
Good morning.
I have presented to the board. I'm here today to present a contract for our milk for the school year. I have presented to the board. I'm here today to present um a contract for our milk for the school year. We are requesting approval to use Charles County Public Schools' um contract with Cloverland Farms. This contract is valid through June 30th of 2022. On June 26th, 2019, the board approved the use of the Stafford County Public Schools' contract through Lehigh Valley. This contract expired on July 31st. We are requesting, um we have requested several um and reviewed several contracts um through nearby school systems and identified the best option for our school system. We feel that um going off of the Charles County contract will give us that opportunity. Under this contract, um we are anticipating to exceed $400,000 this school year. It's hard to determine exactly the amount that we'll spend this year. Um with last year, you know, being back in hybrid model, um it was hard to determine an exact amount. We're also able to provide supper and snack and free meals to all students this year. So um the anticipated use of this contract is kind of up in the air. We'll have a better, which why we feel to use this contract this year is is good so then we can go out and rebid um at the end of next school year with better numbers and be able to um provide more data to um our vendors. The actual, as I said, the actual um purchase will depend on the programs and the funding of the program. Our funding source is on the School Food Service Enterprise Fund. The procurement method, um Charles County um issued the bid um on June 13th, 2007. Two responses were received and evaluated by a committee of three. The criteria and pricing, experience, customer service, support, and industry knowledge. Cloverland Farms Dairy received the highest overall score and was re- and was rewarded the contract. Piggybacking is um accepted through Comore and we ask the board that you accept the agenda item as presented.
Let's see. Uh Judy, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Rita.
I want to thank you for going out and researching the best um best for your buck, you know, to to find that switching from Lehigh to the other company was a better, better thing, you know. Because I, you know, when I first was on the board, um a lot of things were just piggybacked without researching. And, you know, thank you for going out and and doing all that work to find out what was your best, best price.
Kevin.
Um how do these prices compare to the prices we've paid in past more normal school years?
Oh, the comparison that we did use was from 19. Um and so based off of those numbers, it would be um around a um $9,000 savings for, for the school system. So that was based off of those numbers, of course, with the, the usage and everything, the, that, that will vary this school year. But there is, there is definitely a, a cost savings in going with Cloverland.
Um and where's Cloverland Farms Dairy? Uh where is their organization or their company located? Do you know? I mean, is it, I, I guess my question really revolves around um the dependability of them being able to deliver the, the goods that we'll be purchasing from them.
Um they currently deliver to all Charles County Public Schools and I do believe that um Calvert as well uses, uses Cloverland. So um we've used them in the past as well. Um so we are, we're confident in their ability to deliver to all of our school sites. They also um offer the same routes that we had and delivery schedule as we had with Lehigh. Um so the way that we currently do it is we have um half of our schools get milk delivered three days a week and the other get two. And then on the other week, it's, it's vice versa. So they're able to accommodate that and to deliver to all of our schools and to our warehouse um just the same as, as Lehigh was able to do. So.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Mary or Jim?
No questions. Good job, Ms. Doring. No questions. Thank you.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of milk and related products from Cloverland Farms Dairy using the Charles County Public Schools' contract FNMS 1617 through June 30, 2022.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion is.
Aye.
Thank you.
So I would like to take an opportunity to, just like Mr. Thompson, to just say that um for those that don't know, um all meals are free for all students through the whole school near you, um this upcoming school year. So we're very excited about that and hope that families take the opportunity to um uh eat breakfast, lunch, and then also participate in our take-home meals. We will be providing take-home supper and snack for all students that would like to take advantage of that opportunity. Um the good thing that we are excited about this year is that we will have options for students again. Last year, it was, this is the meal, this is what you get. We are going back to um students having choices of um different entrees, different fruits, different vegetables, things like that, which was, were not available last school year. So um you know, last school year was a little bit different. So please give us a chance this year to uh redeem ourselves and have more products available as the supply cha- uh chain um is available for us. And we hope to that everybody will take an opportunity to participate in our program this year.
Well, and even during the middle of the pandemic, how many meals did you, did you deliver?
We have served over 2 million meals, so.
Uh I think that's, that's pretty darn laudable. Too many. That's something.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. The Chopticon High School press box.
Oh, my gosh. Now that's the next level. Hang it forward. That is true.
I'm spoiled.
With good reason.
Thank you.
Um, good morning. I'm here to present the Chopticon High School press box. The request is for approval to award a contract to Vantage Stadium Systems LLC in the amount of thirty, $338,000 to design and install a pre-manufactured press box at Chopticon High School Stadium Field. And also a $37,000 in contingency. Um I want to share a little bit of the um history of why this project is being brought back. Um it, for the past probably four or more years, it's been a priority to replace this press box at Chopticon. Uh the aging and deteriorating of the conditions uh really request that we get into it and replace it. Uh there's a lot of water damage coming through and you can see it if you ever visit um the press box. You can see it in the floor structure, in the wall, on the masonry. And uh it's, it's, it's visible. It's obvious that we are in need of a replacement. Uh it um last year, um during the uh Maryland Legislative Session, uh Senator Bailey brought up a bond to uh get this project funded. The bond is for $100,000. And it's uh uh the explicit for the acquisition, planning, design, construction, repair, renovation, um reconstruction, site improvement of capital equipment of the Chopticon High School Stadium Press Box uh for $100,000. It was approved last spring, uh on April. And um I'm moving forward to getting the design and getting all the 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 shop drawings prepared so we can get this on time. Um just going back to the question that uh Ms. Washington asked previously about the stadium field. This is a, a field that is used not only by our students, but our staff, community. We so use it to so serve athletic events. We use it for fine art programs. And we also use it for assemblies, classes, and also community programs in there. So a wide variety of people will be uh benefiting from this project. Um the project funding, uh like I said before, we will be using the, the grant for $100,000. And we will be using the balance of $275,000 with um local CIP. We have um, we have allocated uh FY 21 and we will also have FY 22, uh a new project called Fields and Grounds. So this will be the first project that we will be using to sponsor this project. Um and it's basically the $338,000 plus the contingency that we'll be using uh for things that we really can't uh document yet until we get there and demo. Um there, there'll be a lot of um installation of the equipment that is existing that we don't know yet. Um there has been several um surveys done through the electrical installation, how we will be providing electrical to the um press box. Uh but we will not know until we get there. Um and this scope will include the demolition of the existing structure. Uh we will be doing the foundation work. We will be doing the modular story, two-story building, just like the, just kind of replacing what we have right now, storage underneath, the, the modular on the top. We will have access to a upper uh deck for the camera for, for filming. Um I don't think the, that, that upper camera filming has been used in a while because it's not, it's not in good condition. So I'm, I'm looking forward to having this project done and getting back to it. Um timeline, um we are also looking for a winter project. Uh with the time that they will take to do the engineering documents, they gave us a preliminary during the study that we did. Uh but they have to come back and do one for this project. That, that takes about eight to 10 weeks. Then they'll fabricate the press box on the top. And in the meantime, we will, as soon as uh sport, uh fall, sport season ends, we will demo what it is in there and we'll start building the masonry so we can put the modular unit on top. Um I've shared here with you some of the, the preliminary drawings. Um it will be a storage, two compartments uh unit on the bottom. One will have a, a overhead door for easier and improved storage. The other one will be just a regular door. Um the, the stairs will be fenced around it so people don't hit their head. Um and then eh we will have the press box, I have to also share that um it will be conditioned press box, so it'll feel better throughout the year.
Good.
And these are some examples. They're not exactly how they will look, but I wanted you to, to visualize the masonry in the bottom and a metal structure on the top and then a stair with the uh fencing, the way how we are proposing it. Fencing, the stairs will be straight instead of view, but gives you an idea. Uh for the contractor, we are selecting Vantage Stadium Systems LLC. Vantage Stadium Systems is the Eastern Territory Sales Agent for Dan Clayton. And Dan Clayton has been in the business of doing press books forever. We've hired them before. Um and, and they, they are a very good company to do this kind of project. They're the leading company on it. Um we are procuring through a source well contract and uh it is valid until 2023. And they warranty that they're offering us is a year on, on the installation after the last invoice. Um and at this, um open for questions, but I or request, recommend that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
Uh Judy?
Um I would just like to note that renovating or replacing the Chopticon High School press box is long overdue and the other high schools have already had their time. So um I'm really happy that this is moving forward or going to be moving forward.
No questions.
Kevin.
Um two questions for you. Um I, the, the um example that you showed us, I know you said it's not exactly what ours is going to be, but um is there going to be ADA access? How?
So we don't have, we don't provide a lift for the chop, for the press box.
Okay.
Um the stairs will be ADA compliant.
Okay.
And everything else in there, like the counters size, you know, it will be, but getting up there at that height is going to be uh a challenge.
Okay.
To have a lift. Um the way that the stadium is designed, it uh allows a little bit of access in the top, but not to the press box.
Okay. Um and then the access to the roof, um I, I know that in the one you showed us, um they didn't have it fenced in the, in the drawings that you showed us. You showed us that there would be fencing up there. But how otherwise will, will people ascend a ladder up through the box?
Um I can't show you, but if you see that in the section and on the floor plan also, you'll see like a, a hatch.
Trap, yep.
There'll be a ladder.
Okay.
And then it'll, it's, it's closed and typically only approved people, adults, are able to go up there. No students are allowed. And uh though they access through that latch and then they'll be protected by that fence that is shown on the elevation.
Right. Um and will this allow us, um if we um in the future decide to do graduations back at the high schools for any reason um or anything else, um would, would we have the opportunity to livestream?
Yes.
Yes.
But, but for sporting events?
Oh, yeah.
Livestreaming?
There, there is a project too, and we're working on five, uh five optics to, to get to the stadium. Um I think it's in the process. It's, it's not monitored by, by the design or construction, but I'm working with them to coordinate. Um but the, once we, this gets demo, then we'll tie into the press box.
Okay. Yeah. I, I know that um, you know, having attended the old um uh graduations in the football stadium, it is not necessarily um uh the best option, but but as we've discovered in the last 18 months, options are good.
Wait till we have a beautiful turf field that's absolutely gorgeous and, and logoed and yeah, we, you know.
We'll see.
Just wait. 2022 is going to be great. I, I can feel it. I can feel it.
All right. Mary or Jim?
I have one question. Um it was not included in the quote, but will we be using the old sound system and speakers?
Yes, we will. Um that is not done by them. Um and that is a project that I have to follow up after I do this. This will be my first step, but I will put back together everything, so.
Yes, as it was found.
And, oh, excuse me, mistake, two questions. Will the press box be air-conditioned?
Yes, ma'am. Um I, um it, it will be conditioned uh throughout, for all seasons, so yes. It'll be very nice.
I'm sure it will. You do a lot of, you make sure we hit our quality for our money.
Yes.
Jim, do you have anything?
No, no questions, but great job, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, uh may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education.
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract award to Vantage Stadium Systems LLC in the amount of $338,000 plus $37,000 on a construction contingency to design and install a pre-manufactured press box at the Chopticon High School Stadium Field.
May I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to your staff who I know traveled to Annapolis on uh Bond Day, which was a Saturday.
Juan, thank you.
To Senator Bailey for finding the funding for one-third of that incredibly important project.
It's good to have a list.
Yes, it is. May we always be on that list.
Well, I mean, a list of projects.
Yes. May we always have our projects on that list.
We have our whole cart list, always rolling, so.
If you have a dollar, I have a place to spend it.
You certainly do, so.
Commissioner Morgan will tell you that that's very true as well.
All right, Ms. Howell.
I don't get to pay this forward to anybody, so.
Well, you know, you, you get to close out the whole meeting. How about that?
Thank you for everybody in advance. Um so we're here today to um seek approval for a facility utilization study. Um like everybody else has talked today, I was impacted on this project by COVID um and the ability to move it forward. Um and I do want to thank Bryn Cosner. Um she was an incredible resource to the committee as we worked through this RFP process. So I want to give her thanks for all of her do, due diligence as well. So we're here today to request approval of a contract award in the amount of $169,000 for consulting services to Canon Washington Incorporated, also known as Canon Design, which is how you will hear us talk about them, um for a facility utilization study. Um and really what we're looking at is the most effective way to use our facilities as we move forward. And there's some things I'll talk about that have changed over time and how that's going to play into um the study. But ultimately, we want to get a, a study and a report that But ultimately, we want to get a, a study and a report that shows us how best to utilize our 27 facilities as we move forward. It was approved for funding in FY '21, but due to COVID, we decided to take a pause on that. We wanted to make sure that we were meeting all of our needs and assisting the system as best we could, but we wanted to see what happened as a result of our student enrollment because it's a real important factor to have the most current enrollment information that we can. In addition, there's a lot of changes that were happening at the state level. So the scope was revised as it went out to reflect some of the latest changes. A key component to that is that the state has recently determined that relocatables 15 years and younger will be part of the capacity as we look at our facilities. So we will be looking at our relocatables that are 15 years in age or younger. And that is a discussion that will be presented to the State Funding Commission as it works through 15 years for relocatables, 20 years for modulators. Modulators are buildings that are completely constructed together and are permanent. So we're going to look at all of our options and come up with fiscal and operational impacts for all of the work that we're going to do. This is a loose project schedule. This is what we put out with the RFP. If approved, we'll work with Cannon Design and we will come up with a very succinct schedule. But the intention is that by December, we will have preliminary recommendations that the internal committee up at DSS will review and we will publish a report that will come out in January. And by the time we get through March, we will have presented to the board. And we'll have a presentation that will allow us then to tie into our educational facilities master plan, the new requirements for the comprehensive maintenance plan, and will then lead us forward to our FY '24 CIP project. So this is going to all time together with all of those changes. We did put out a request for a proposal on eMaryland Marketplace and Ms. Cosner also put it on our, our local purchasing board proposals. We're due in July. We did receive two proposals. A selection committee made up of my staff and maintenance reviewed those proposals. We did find that Cannon Washington Incorporated had the highest overall combined score. We then had a Zoom meeting with them to ask some further questions as we were moving forward. So we are looking at Cannon Washington Incorporated, known as Cannon Design. They're located in Baltimore, Maryland. They've got 20 years of Maryland experience. They've got collaborative partnerships with Educational Facilities Planning in Maryland as well, which is headed up by Dr. Lever. That is his firm. They are a national firm with 20 global offices and they offer full service from master planning, design, facility optimization, workplace strategy, and technological services. So as we look forward to how we want to go, we have options in the future, if we so choose, to look at things like floor plan design and bringing everything into a techno, technology platform that would take all the data that they're going to have and give us that ability to, to graphically display that with our floor plans. They did, we did ask them to provide references and as you can see, they have a very extensive line of projects that they've done in the last five years throughout the state. I did contact all of these references and got very glowing reports back, especially Baltimore County because they are currently doing their MSA projects, the Maryland Stadium Authority projects. So they have extensive knowledge between the two partnerships with what's going on with the legislative changes, Kerwin changes. They could not give a more glowing recommendation for them. Pete Dixit at Baltimore, he's got me beat. He has 50 years of experience in working with school systems and said that their communication, their ability to, to outreach, to, to get information back, but more importantly, to listen to what the school system had to say of what they needed to do. And while they may not have always agreed, they worked towards a resolution that was in the best, in his best manner for the students in Baltimore. So we are very excited with the prospect of what they bring to the table. The project team, I did put this up here, is a collaboration between Cannon Design and Educational Facility Planner, and we are excited to, to work with the two leads and the opportunities that they bring forward, especially with Dr. Lever's vast extensive knowledge of this county and our philosophies and the way we do business, as well as the state regulations. The project team approach, I'm not going to go into great detail now because I need to learn more from them, but they are not only going to look at our facilities just as a brick and mortar facility, they're going to look at the equity of that across the system, but they're also going to look at the opportunity of those buildings to provide the equity for the student opportunity within those, to look at programs and services and help us to identify if there's anything that we might want to change as we go forward. So it's a, it's a holistic approach to looking at a facility and how it serves the students in that community. So it is a lump sum fixed fee. They had very detailed requirements in the RFP that they have to meet and they are priced as $169,000. They did, are, were required to provide us with additional labor rate schedules, which were very competitive in the event that we have any additional services that we would like to ask for them to do. We have a capital budget of $175,000, so we're looking for a word of the contract for $169,000 and a contingency of $6,000. So we're excited to, to see if we can get this started. So we're here today to get approval of the agenda as presented.
I have two quick questions. So I'm assuming that this will position us favorably with the new process for approval for projects through the Stadium Authority and the current inter-agency for school construction or whatever, you know, whatever their, whatever their role is going to be now, correct? Okay.
So some of the information that we're going to provide to them is originally this was going to be a facilities condition index. And as we saw, the state was going to implement theirs, they were going to be doing all that background work. And at the end of the day, it was going to be their number that, that mattered. So what we did is we transitioned to let's look at our, our facilities, let's look at our programs, let's look at their FCI and tie it together so that at the end, we have a document that supports us not only with an FCI facilities condition index, but supports our program and where we want to head, taking in, looking at full day kinder, pre-kindergarten, looking at all of these. So as we go towards FY '24, which is going to be the first time we ask for a Built to Learn Act funding project, we're going to have a document that says this is why.
So I'm also assuming that this will go much further. Rather than the state dictating what we need, we now have an independent assessment of what we need.
Yes, that takes into account their data.
Right, exactly.
And uses it to our advantage, the way we want to do business.
Right, okay. So therefore, we will not have maybe quite as much guidance and direction from the state on how we want to do things.
We're going to use their data, but we're going to use it in our way.
Right, okay. And then secondly, so the Educational Facilities Master Plan is due to the state in-
July.
-July. So we'll have this in time to update the 2023 plan.
And that's why I made it very clear, they, Cannon Design understands that March 1st, I want a finished document that we have completely vetted through my, my office through, we've already got meetings scheduled up with Dr. Hall to talk about programs. I've already got that for next week. But it will go on through the board, will all be in agreement with the plan. Active, real work starts in March on the master plan. So it will tie right into it and it will be an attachment to our master plan as it goes up.
Okay. All right, I like it. All right, Judy?
Yes. So can and will this data from the study be used to reexamine school boundaries and to redraw boundary lines to accommodate for like overcrowded schools?
That will be one of the things we look at. And what it's going to be, it's really going to be the utilization of that. And they've got, they've got some templates that they use in terms of our ability to display this to the community, but we're going to look at things of how students migrate through programs. Where do we have, like for STEM, our academies that we had had, Global GIS, where do students come from? What does that migration pattern look like? We're also going to take a look at migration within our schools within the year. We know that we have a lot of students that move from school to school. We're going to look at that to see is there a way we could redraw a boundary that might reduce that travel between two schools. It's going to give us a lot of insight into our, our students and how our facilities are used by them.
All right. Thank you so much. And I have another question. So this is just to clarify on my understanding and maybe like anyone else who's, anyone else who's watching, but could the data from this study be used to justify like construction of new, of a new school in the county?
We really don't have the enrollment projections that would warrant a new school being built, but what it might do is look at some of our existing schools and look at options to maybe do an addition somewhere and do redistricting. So it will provide those options, the most fiscally responsible, but the best for our students as well. So what I'm anticipating is that we're going to have a multitude of recommendations that we can evaluate and see which works best for us as a school system.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your questions.
How many modulators do we have that are older than 15 years old and will, even though those might not be taken into the account of this study, will they still continue to be used?
So that's something we, I mean, we have to look at that over the long term because we do have a lot of relocatables that are in use. And this is the discussion we, we were having is a lot of them are used for program because the buildings were built at a time when we didn't have all of the programs. I don't have the specific number for you of how many are, but I can tell you that it is a vast majority of them are older than 15 years. We have the state units, the quad units that we rely on heavily, that estimates are, they're 45-plus years old. So there is a large portion of them that are. We're not saying we're going to be able to eliminate them all. We know we can't. But how do we best utilize them within, and within the programs that we have offered in the schools that we have?
Thank you.
If not, and we do continue to need to use them, then if their useful life is 15 years, we need to look at how we would potentially modernize those or replace those with something in the future. That'll be another addition to the conversation for capital planning.
Thank you.
Kathy?
You know, sometimes when we bring consultants in, they come with what I would call a, a big city mentality or, you know, or a, a large county mentality. When I reviewed this the other evening and I saw Dr. Lever on here, I, I just breathed a sigh of relief because his knowledge of the state and of our system in particular are, is quite extensive. And his, his viewpoint in, in listening to how we utilize our schools based on, on our educational needs and our community, I think, is, is well-known. And so I really was pleased to see that he was part of this. I mean, his, his knowledge of, of the laws and requirements that we function under is extensive and I think is going to be extremely helpful.
Yes, I went back to the slide to talk about the work they've done in, in Maryland. They have done large schools, they've done small schools, they've done single projects for school systems on, for like Talbot. And Dr. Lever is a huge asset and when you look at the 1990s and the program that we built, he was integral to that as his role at the IAC and he understands truly what it is we were going to try and achieve. So I have great hopes as well. The other proposal was a, was, was a good proposal. It did exceed our budget, but it was a more national firm that was more cookie cutter and you were going to get what they perceived. When we talked to Cannon, everybody walked away from it of they're here to be a member of St. Mary's County Public Schools. They're, they're here to be part of the team. So we are very excited for that opportunity.
I'm very pleased. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Jim, do you have anything?
Oh, he's muted.
Oh. All right, Mary, do you have anything?
Okay. I looked at the other, but the other company-
Hold on, Mary, do you have any, do you have any questions?
Yes, who, me? I'm talking, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Do you have any questions for Ms. Howell?
Okay. Yes, I have a question. I regret the bid for the other company and it was higher than the company that is recommended, but they had some things in there that I would like to see included in this person's, because they talked, you mentioned equity, but that other company had somebody to deal specifically with equity when it deals with the concerns that we are addressing. And they seem to be more up to date with what's going on and what's relevant. So equity is key and we treasure equity in SMCPS because we even have an equity coordinator, Mrs. Dillahun, who's worked strategically and very diligently on her job as equity. So I want to make sure that with this contract, that they focus on equity, access, and inclusion for all students. They also had a person that, who would do public engagement if that became necessary, if we wanted to hear, you know, get public input, they would do that piece for us. And I saw some things in that contract that I really liked. So I just want to ensure that they keep the focus of equity, access, and inclusion for all students in this, because we want to bring, make sure our schools are up to date on the latest with equity and inclusion. So.
Right. So Mary, with, with what we have in the school's equity policy and making sure that everything is looked at through the equity lens, I think you can be rest assured that, you know, Ms. Howell and her team will, will take those items into account as they work through this process. And I think the second thing too is looking at some of the other school systems in Maryland that they have, you know, that they've worked with, you know, even as recently as last year. I think that they're all pretty much on board with what the state is requiring for equity through, you know, through the legislative actions, so.
And I just want to make sure that it's a contract with them. So it has to be in writing that here, you know, you give them all our equity policies and that it is a focus on equity and inclusion. I heard the presenter say equity, but I want to make sure that it is part of the discussion with this group and I understand exactly what you're saying. Okay?
Okay. All right, then with that, can I have a motion?
We have Rita do it since she got cut off the last time.
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract award for a facility utilization study to Cannon Washington Incorporated in the amount $169,000 plus a project contingency of $6,000. Further, that the Board authorize the use of the hourly rate pricing on this contract to purchase additional services from Cannon Washington Incorporated as needed and as funding permits.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Second!
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else for the good of the order?
No.
Okay. All right, our next meeting will be on August 25th at 6 o'clock, a mere five days before school begins. So not that everything isn't rolling now, but it will really be rolling at that point. So, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.